I guess it's time, let's stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. So we'll start out with what, old business? Now these June 7th and June 11th, when?
Is 7th gonna get tabled again?
7th, 7th is probably gonna get tabled, you know, what do you think?
Why does it have to be tabled?
I don't have the... Because if, if I entertain the idea of a motion and someone makes a motion and someone seconds and then if we tie, she can't be a tiebreaker because it would be a...
Conflict of interest.
Conflict of interest. A league, she can't... Under normal things that we vote on, but since that one check was to her, I don't think she should vote for the tiebreaker, right?
There's two and two. If it came up to be two and two.
I vote on each one, but I can't make a motion that I can vote. See, I could entertain a motion, but if the motion doesn't get made or seconded, then we're still sitting. I need the whole council really for it to be a fair vote. But I mean, we could, we could entertain it. I can't make a motion.
Well, I guess we lost the week twenty's here, I guess.
I mean, that's all I know to do to work, would look legal, to work be legal.
How are we getting on there, too?
Okay. So on the, the July 11th and the August 9th, let's quickly look through those and I would entertain a motion that we approve those claims.
Phil, I forgot to put the minutes in here for August. The August 10th and the... Phil, I forgot to put the August 13th minutes on the agenda.
Oh. So would you want to approve the July 11th, August 9th and?
August 9th and the 5th claims, through the 5th, and then the August 13th minutes.
Okay. So we can do that with one motion and one second to approve all that? Unless you got questions?
Does that make the motion?
We've got a motion.
What are we, what are we?
We're, we're approving August 9th through September 5th claims and the August 13th minutes. And that's not counting those up to the June 7th.
So this is the minutes we just did then, right?
Yeah.
And then these minutes.
And he said he made the motion.
I just think that actually you'd have, so I need the side copy back.
Oh, sorry, I just had two of them.
I put the ones for you, ones for me.
Oh, okay.
I'll, I'll approve the...
You say?
Or I'll second, yeah.
All favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. All right, the, I guess Whitney, you're next.
Okay.
On the agenda.
Um, okay, so I am here with our C W B P C M, all engineer on this past water main project. It's finally starting to wrap up and we so greatly could potentially have another one. Um, so originally, this project that, uh, had the main part has been completed and the lead service fund is still ongoing, but it's set to be substantially complete very soon. Um, it started as a large project that we submitted to the state for funding for. And last year, the state gave a funding package and it did not cover the entire cost of the project. And so what we did was we re-scoped the project to only the portion that the state funding would cover. We also resubmitted the portion of the project that state funding did not cover for this fiscal year and asked them if they were able to provide any additional funding. Um, we updated the project costs as well at that time based upon the bids that we've received this past year so that we would be as accurate as possible. Um, so we ended up getting a project cost that include, or a package from the state that includes them paying for all the remaining lead service line improvements. So every other lead service line in town, they would pay for their replacement. And then the remaining portion of the project, um, is 4,350 linear feet of six inch and 6,545 linear feet of eight inch water main with all the gate valves, everything. So essentially, it ends up replacing a majority of what's left in town needs to be replaced. There would be some older mains that would still be in town, but they would be select ones that don't have a lot of services off of them or don't affect hydraulics. As well as reconnecting all those service lines, replacing all of the fire hydrants in town and all other associated costs with that. So the state agreed to pay for all the lead service lines and then the remaining portion of the project, once you include contingencies and all the fees and stuff associated with sending all of those pay applications and stuff like that into the state, is a $4.8 million package. The state agreed to pay for $4 million of the 4.8 million. So what I'm here to talk about is essentially what that project entailed because we need to have meeting minutes that reflect that the project was introduced. And then also, I wanted to make sure that I gave the information of the actual package that's been received. Technically, that didn't have to be a part of this. I just had to introduce the project. But we will have things to talk about over the coming weeks for how we want to proceed. Um, I did also receive some information from the town's financial advisor with what it would look like if the town did elect to go through the whole project and finance the remaining portion rather than trying to do a re-scope again. And that would result in some level of rate increase. So he said that he will be here next meeting to talk about that, to see if that is something that you would want to do. His preliminary study looks like, he gave me some information, but of course, I'm not a CPA. It looks like, um, he would be financing the .8 million and that would end up with like a, I think a $20 increase, which is pretty substantial, especially considering the rates, um, are already about at a little under 60. So that's definitely something that we want to talk about specifically with the state. Sometimes they offer lower interest rates to buy down, um, what your total rate would be for an increase. So that'll be something he has to talk about with the state. And then also, we talked about maybe re-scoping the project again to cut out a certain amount of work so that perhaps the state would agree to something they did last year where we don't have to do a rate increase or anything like that. And then we just give a portion of the state's willing to pay for. Um, so essentially, that's what I'm here for, just to talk about the package, to talk about the project, to just give you that information so that we have it on the town council meeting minutes. But there's nothing we need to pass today, nothing we need to decide today. It's mostly so that you can have that information so that we can begin the process of figuring out what the best way forward would be. Just as an aside, the package is a very like favorable package this year. I mean, $4 million of, well, 4.9 by the time you take in these count lead service lines worth of money is not anything to be upset about. But obviously, you know, we're used to being able to get projects done without having to take out additional loans and things like that. So it's definitely something that we'll want to talk about, how we're wanting to move forward. I was telling Amy that what's great about this is that this year, they opened up the timetable a little bit more and we already designed the entire thing. So our timeline's a lot shorter this time around in terms of engineering. So we have a little bit more time to actually think about how we want to proceed. I think the best thing to do would be for me to talk with Steve a little bit more about some additional options, ask him what he thinks is possible to get out of the state in terms of would they be willing to buy down rates to a certain amount? What would that amount be? By giving a lower interest loan, I think state loan amount is like 2. something percent. Sometimes historically, they've made the interest rate even lower, like 1% or whatever, to get down to a certain rate. Um, and then asking him, you know, what makes the most sense financially? And then kind of presenting a number of different options and then seeing what is best from there. So I guess that's my little spiel. Any questions about all that? It's a lot of information, so.
So did we borrow money this time around?
No.
And then with everybody, so like, I received the note on the door, I'm one that received, but I've never been contacted.
Yeah, so with this round of funding, they only, we only were able to get about $400,000 of lead service line replacement funds. And so what happened was, um, with those funds, the main thing was that all of the services in town that were anticipated to be led were potholed or are going to be potholed. I think there's a few remaining ones that they still need to figure out.
Not very many, I wish Bruce would have been able to come, because he'd be able to tell you exactly how many. So if, did everybody in town receive the notice on their, like, so was I like one of the selected ones to receive that? Because I've never got contact, like...
So what specific notice are you talking about? Sorry, I'm not the contractor, I mean, it's a...
We, we got a note on our door, says call, make an appointment.
From S O B, okay.
Yeah, I got it.
So about an appointment?
Right.
Yeah, so that meant that they potholed your line and they determined that it was galvanized steel? And so what that would mean is then they only were able to use the remaining funds in the project to make replacements. So what that would mean is the next round, this round of funding, your line would get replaced. If that makes sense.
Okay.
So essentially, they potholed everybody, figured out exactly who was galvanized steel or lead. Both, both of them apply to this rule. So we don't actually have any hard lead. Um, it's galvanized steel, which is around the same time period. If it was downstream of a lead line, um, the state considers it for replacement the same as they would consider one. If you received like that note and didn't get contacted, it meant they hit their amount before they got to you, essentially. So that would mean that your line would be replaced along with, I don't know exactly how many are left.
I don't remember.
I want to say...
Did they hire everybody around you?
Yep. Everybody around you was the same, yeah?
No, they, they did theirs.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I mean, it makes sense that your area would have been all similar service line type because most of the time you see, unless something got replaced, like whole blocks of people have similar service lines because it's how it was built. But yeah, I'm not sure exactly what they did to determine like who to make calls to and stuff like that. We basically just had them get to their number that they needed to get to. So as far as like, if they went, I would, like, I had no clue because I'm not the contractor. But that was that portion. And then the next portion would be to do everyone else, essentially. So with this portion of money, they found all, every single bit of lead or galvanized line in town and then went through a number of replacements to get to their dollar amount that the state was willing to fund. And then the next round would be all the remaining replacements. The other thing that's nice about them potholding and everything is that the town is required to send to the state a lead service line inventory in October. Essentially, the state is requiring every single municipality across the entire state to submit every single address that they provide water to, on exactly what their service line is made out of. And this portion of the project essentially did that for the town. Because since they potholed everything, we now know what everyone's service line is made out of. Um, and like I said, there's no actual lead. Um, it's all galvanized steel, um, which is not the same type of like, you know, alarm bells. But it's still something that is eligible for replacement and eligible to be paid for. And so that's what we resubmitted for, hey, can we get their rest of the money to pay for the rest of town? And they agreed for that. So that would be a part of the grant package outside of even the $4 million. So they gave a grant package of nearly $5 million.
Is that strictly just in the town unit? Because we actually provide water lines outside the city limits.
Yes, it is the entirety of everywhere that is serviced. So it's not just strictly the town.
I don't know if they said that it wasn't the last time.
That was last year. I don't know.
I, um, the other thing too could have been that the portions outside of town were installed substantially after when galvanized steel would have gone underground. So they just be like, they're not galvanized. And so it's kind of a moot point. Um, because I know that that portion that goes out on the cemetery, that's all H D P E, so that's all plastic.
Wagner's the other one, they concern that?
Yeah, and I, I think both of those probably already determined to not have the issue. There is like, there is this interesting kind of line there too. If something in your house is physically metal, that's like not a part of what this would be. So this is replacement of the part that's outside of the house. So some homes are older and they have metal pipes in them. That's not the service line itself, that's your plumbing. And so that part doesn't get replaced. And so there may be homes that have older plumbing, but newer services, where essentially it just doesn't fall under that same rule.
So there are water lines going out on Wagner and also Cemetery Road. They aren't service lines, they're considered water mains by...
Correct.
By N dot.
Yes. And then there's service lines that come off of that and go into your houses.
Well, those were installed privately back in the 60s.
Yep.
The bad news is the town kept adding more people onto those lines that did invest in the original lines going in.
Yeah.
And on Wagner, I just had a leak yesterday. And that's constant, they know where to go to look. But it's always, the thing there too is those water line pressure, since they're only like two inch lines and you're serving like six or eight houses.
Right.
Pressure's not good. So the people have installed water pumps.
Yep.
Which is dangerous for the fact that if someone has contamination, they're drawing that out of that line and contaminating everybody else in the system.
So downhill? Us?
You know, like for instance, Wagner.
So are they not helping?
Initially, the town had a group, and those lines went in back in 63. There was a group of people to put their money into. The thing was, the town of Milton kept adding more people on over the years on Wagner and on Cemetery Road, that the original owners, they just like, hey, you're taking over our lines. Why are we getting out of it?
Before me?
Well, same here. I just know about it.
Well, now too, they would just have to be, pay a higher service fee to keep theirs maintained. Eventually they'll cover that.
Yeah, so, um, with, specifically with this project and with what has already gone into the ground, one of the big, big pieces of the actual main replacements that have happened inside of town is to provide additional pressure to that area of town. So without having to actually replace that line, you can increase pressure in that line. Because if you're replacing other lines that feed that line with higher size pipes, that obviously allows more water to get to that point. So we had a full model done where we selected the oldest pipes and also the most pertinent pipes to increase pressure all throughout town so that all of the fire hydrants would be at a better residual pressure in the event of a fire too. And, um, that entire model has to do with the entire suite projects. But when we re-scoped, when we specifically picked exactly which mains to do with this round, we were able to look at that modeling to, to make sure that at least the fire hydrants were all at a higher pressure. So even just the amount that has already been done in terms of along Main Street, Izor and up that back alley on the north side, that alone has increased the fire hydrant pressures out on even right next to the entrance to Wagner by like a pretty substantial amount in terms of like static pressure. Um, but then this project would continue to increase that even more because it would replace another 10,000 feet, 10.8, yeah, 10,800 feet of pipe. So all of those pipes are obviously older, they're smaller, they also have a lot more buildup inside of them. Because one of the things that Milton does, which is nice that it doesn't require that the, the well water that comes out of the well at the plant is so good, that filtration, like physical filtration is not required. It just needs to be chlorinated, just disinfected. And that's great. The only problem is when you disinfect something, um, it silt's up the pipes a little bit more because there's nowhere for any like, it's called total suspended solids, but there's nowhere for any like silt that's created through that to really go except for get attached to the sidewalls of the pipe. So as pipes get older, they don't allow as much flow to go through them. And so that's kind of like the process of, we like have created a model, we calibrated it to all of the hydrant flow tests approved. And then that's how we were able to pick and choose which lines would give like the most bang for your buck in terms of replacements without just being like, okay, let's replace the whole entire system. Because you're talking about like astronomical costs at that point.
Our, our pump house down here by the bridge, our pumps do have unique filters on the bottom of the pumps.
Yes, they have like a little, um...
It's, it's a, it's custom made.
Yep.
And we had to shut one down because one of those filters broke a few years ago.
Yeah, they're like, they're called, um, like silt screens. Um, but yeah, they're specific to larger like wells that are going to be serving a whole municipal community. They need to have that on them versus if you had a well for your just individual home, it would be a different type of well. So there is that level of like screening, but then there's say the anthracite filtration where you have like a big giant like filtering unit where you have pressure filter and stuff like that. And luckily, the raw water is at such a good quality that that's not required here, uh, which is great. But sometimes that makes the pipes age a little bit faster, um, because there's nowhere for everything to get collected, essentially, except for on the pipes. So, um, but yeah, so that is a, a big piece of it is making sure that everybody has adequate pressure without having to use booster pumps. But yeah, booster pumps without backflow preventers are a problem because you can allow water to go backwards. Um, so it's definitely something that we can even talk with Bruce about. Just a simple backflow preventer changes at least that piece of it where you can't actually shoot water back into the system.
Right.
I actually liberalize our, our pressure ends on that.
Some have, some haven't. I've heard of both.
So if, so at the hydrants, we have, we have the data that it has. But in an individual home, depending on what your plumbing looks like, you could potentially not see as much increases because we only know what happened in the main, right? So once it gets to your actual individual service line, if you have like three quarter inch pipes or like really old pipes, um, you might not see as much because there's pressure loss in going through the entirety of the process, right? So water starts at the main.
Our house was only seven years old.
Oh, yeah, you should have definitely...
We've got the latest and greatest plastic.
Yeah, you definitely should have seen some level of increase. Did you, but you may have already had high enough water pressure and not had as much losses. Do you have lower water pressure at your house? Like, you, okay.
Some low pressure. You can tell when someone else turned their faucet on.
Oh, yeah?
It's not in our house.
Yeah, that's weird. I would have to look at it a little bit more. But we did do like access of the hydrants and static pressures of each hydrant and they did go up. So...
Mine went up.
I know mine did.
Yeah, so that's really interesting. I'd be, I'm not a plumber, so like there's a piece of that where it's just like, hmm, really, exactly? But that's really interesting. I'd be interested to like go and peek around and like try to see what I could figure out. Maybe you're like off of a different line than we thought you were, but...
We're now hooked to the line off of Izor. Before we was hooked to the line that was off of Walnut.
Oh, maybe that's it.
And now we're on the new Izor line, which is...
But you didn't see a difference with switching? But what I wonder is if the line that you were, were on has higher pressure than the one that you put on? And so then the pressure difference is like, not really anything between the two. This additional project has a bunch more lines and so then pressures will increase in lower pressure areas. I mean, by nature, like, like actually has to happen physically. But yeah, so maybe I wonder with that switch if that's what happened? Like that line has a higher residual pressure or higher static pressure? And then switching you over to the new one, it has a similar static pressure on it than what you used to have, essentially? And then you didn't really receive that much of a benefit except the fact that you're on new plastic. But yeah. I love all this stuff.
So with all this being done, well, how much quality of water?
So part of, one of the reasons why all of this was pursued was because of water quality. And a huge piece of that is all of that silting that's created. So if you see the cross section of like the pipes that they replaced, I think they showed you one?
I actually, mine, no, it's all mine.
It's absolutely crazy. So all of that iron and buildup, what it does is it's not perfectly stuck to the outside of the walls, right? And so it reaches out into clean water that's coming from the pump station that's, passes air test, it's perfectly clean, like this. And then what happens is it goes through all these dirty pipes that have buildup from the past 80 years. And you end up with this...
We had one that was older than that. That's what was in mine. That's all the water that was coming into my house.
Right, exactly. And that's also part of the reason why you can see that the pressures are lower is because the cross section's smaller. Um, so yes, the replacement of lines, it will have water quality. To the degree that we've replaced so far, I don't know that you would really be able to see it. But with another 10,800 linear feet of it, I think you would be able to start to see it more. The other piece of it too is just chlorination in the entire plant, everything like that. Bruce has got it pretty under control, but sometimes with having such a volatile system of just putting in chlorine, you have to up your chlorine in certain instances. And so that's like one of those things that if he gets like a plant, he can go out, kind of pay a little bit closer attention to it, maybe up his chlorine a little bit if he doesn't have enough residual of that kind of thing. But yes, that is another piece of what would come from more replacements. It's not just the actual, you know, pressure at your houses, but also the quality of the water that comes in. Man, I feel like I just did a Shakespearean monologue on that.
I got a question. Would you also be replacing and adding hydrants?
Yes. Um, so there's 33 hydrants in town and this would call for 35 hydrants. So it would replace all of the existing hydrants. And then there's two additional locations that we felt were really, really important to get, one to the state standard of having a hydrant every 600 feet.
We need one. How are we gonna shoot River Street that way? We had nothing right there.
Yeah, I think there's, I think, I know there's two spots. We went through and made sure that it was, it matched the correct thing. So that might be one of the locations. I think another location might be near the, um, fire department, the volunteer fire department. I think there might be some River. Is that the River?
Rivers and Walnut.
Okay.
That's Rivers and Walnut.
I think it's River and Walnut and maybe River and...
See, we need River and Walnut, yeah.
Yeah.
There, we got two there by the fire station.
Yeah.
On River Street. One off of Main and one off of Walnut.
Yeah, there's a specific, there's two specific, um, locations where there was not like at all a fire hydrant anywhere. So that's probably one of the two locations where we were at, we were planning to add one. But I'm not sure exactly off the top of my head where those two locations where they were planning to add a hydrant were. I just knew that there wasn't anything in the vicinity of them when we went through the process of, um, design the first time around, which was a couple of years ago. So, so I don't know cross streets. But yeah, that would include also replacing all of the fire hydrants as well. And so that would be also a big benefit. I don't, there hasn't really been a lot of like leaks or a lot of issues with the existing fire hydrants, but they are getting a lot older. And since they were all put in around the same time for the most part, what you end up doing is you start seeing all of them go bad at once, which just sucks. I really wish that that was not the case. Um, and so this would kind of get ahead of that. There hasn't really been a ton of problems with it, but it would allow us to replace them and then be good for the next. I mean, they're rated for 80 plus years, so none of us would have to worry about it.
Works your way.
Yeah.
Okay, so Bruce is not able to be here with the water and sewer report. But the basket will be installed next week.
Yep.
So it's here.
That's what he told me today.
Okay. That brings us to Matt, your law enforcement report.
Yeah, so most of you have already the uh list of everything that we had done for the month of August. Um just so those of you in the crowd know, there were twelve calls for service, twenty traffic stops resulting in two citations. We wrote four actual violations when it comes to ordinances and wrote an additional seven. Um among those violations, and I know it's a big thing right now, especially on Facebook, is the dogs. She was gi- given a violation for the dogs running loose and pretty much told that if they're out again and that it's proven to us via either footage or we see it ourselves that the animal control officer will be called and we'll kind of go from there because unfortunately, all the pounds are full right now. So they're they're not, we're, I I got with her, she's not real sure what exactly can do, it'd be more of a rehoming situation if she can't keep her dogs within her property. Um I did, when I stopped out to give her the the violation, she did um show me where they are putting a fence in. So hopefully, hopefully they will finish that and 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 that'll solve the issue. I can't speak to as to whether that'll happen or not, but they are trying. The other things with the ordinance, uh I know that bros brought up was the chickens. Um they, the pictures, I know that they had the, they have an agreement with the four H animals. Um they did get me the paperwork, uh I I wasn't able to get it to print off. But I do have it, so after the meeting, if you guys want to see it, I can get it to you.
Okay, that's from the Purdue.
Yes, from the extension office showing that their kids are in four H for the chickens.
But they have a rooster now.
The rooster, yes. So many people have brought this up to me and to the other officers. And I went over, when I spoke to him about the getting the paperwork that we needed, he showed me the rooster and showed me his property line. And unfortunately, it's in the county. So there's nothing I can do. Uh and and the other big thing is with this ordinance, right now that ordinance for chickens is written in pencil. It needs to get on the books because if he wanted to buck the system about it, he potentially could. I know that there was a meeting held where you guys adopted this agreement with him. I know there was set forth for the ordinances to change. But right now, it's, uh we can't go off pencil. According to Joe, you penciling it in on the book doesn't work. We have to actually be voted in.
Very voted in.
That's what I thought we voted in.
But it's like he, like he just said, it's looks like this.
Yeah, it has to get, it has to be on paper as the formal thing.
So is that something that she needs to do?
Uh that's, to be honest, that's that might be a question for Joe.
I don't think Joe would approve that.
I think he would have to read over it and make sure that legally it's sound. And then that's that's kind of on him from there. So un- unfortunately, as to the as to the rooster, there's not a whole lot I can do. If you guys have something or know something that we can do, we'll gladly try to enforce what we can within this, within the town ordinances. But from what he shows me and what I see in the county system for where the property lines are and where the city limits are, it's in the county. Now, it may be a foot into the county.
It sounds awful close.
But.
That's right.
Unfortunately, it's one of those things where as of right now, I can't do anything about the rooster. Oh, uh Tom talked last month about how the uh we had some outstanding ordinances violations that weren't paid yet. Joe had sent me or Amy, I think, an email and she had gotten it to me with some information that he needed uh to go ahead and prosecute, or sorry, not prosecute, but take them to court on the matter. Um we got him that information that he needed and the footage that he needed because ultimately he needed some body cam footage where we had delivered some uh of the ordinances ourselves. So that's all been sent to him now. So ball's kind of in his court to get them into court and get the ordinances paid or or however we're gonna, you know, get out of that. That is the majority of it besides, I know.
Just for the record, the two families that were supposed to meet with us on Thursday didn't show up. And we waited like, what, twenty minutes or more? So that's a.
And that's for the ordinance bureaus?
Yeah, that's, that was their chance, so.
So just to get with them, I'll tell you who they were.
Okay. We'll get it over to Joe. That one gives them. They didn't violate it or not.
I don't think it's to Joe yet, I don't like.
Okay, so we violated.
One, one, but one is.
One is. All right, well, I will get this from you and we will get that done up. Um for those of you in the public who don't know, this is Jerry, Jerry Hammons. He is our, I know the board obviously knows him, they interviewed him and everything. But for those of you in the public, this is Jerry Hammons, he uh comes to us from Randolph County. Don't tell you not to hold it against him, I come from Randolph County too, so don't hold it against either of us. He's got fourteen plus years in law enforcement, if you have any questions at all, feel free to ask him. He's out in patrol and most of the time in the Chargers, so if you see him, stop to it, stop him, talk to him. Yeah, you got anything? I believe that is it for us.
Thank you. All right, Scott, your turn.
Yeah.
Fire report.
Well, you got the cop, the thing of Amy last night, because I couldn't make it. We had a busy month, as you said. A lot going on for us. Uh tanker is still down, we had one brake chamber went out and we found out the other started to go out. So it's going to be replaced ASAP. So we get that truck back on the road. Rescue, we discovered we need new tires. Saturday, they had to bring a tire to the truck at my house so we can fix a tire, put a tire and stuff up to keep going. And we noticed it got a lot of dry rot on the tires. I think they're the original tires on that truck. So six tires need to be replaced soon as we can.
What's wrong with the tanker?
Brake chambers. Down he fixed one and we got it on there and realized that the other one was leaking too. So it's just easier to place it down. And that won't happen around the road a bit. Eighteen hundred gallons of a lot of water, we stopped there.
Yeah.
And the houses that we were supposed to burn them, we found out we can't burn them. We're gonna have to arrange to turn them down instead. State never did contact us back and homeowners just tired waiting, so they made another arrangement, so we lost out on that deal. We got more people wanting to join and put applications in now. So it's starting to build back up. And that's all I got.
Okay, so we're gonna, what we're gonna view the budgets and then go over that on our workshop.
I don't know how it works, I'm new. So I just got everything that I was told my way now sent to give to you. There you go.
But we're not to decide on it tonight because we haven't had a chance to really go through it.
Yep, it's just for you guys to go review it, look at it.
We'll be reviewing the budgets.
In the, set an executive meeting, we're gonna go over it in depth. But this is what, this is the, these are the amounts that I turned in. At four percent across the board.
And the state approves or?
Then on the wage salary ordinance, that is um, I've changed it from the way that we did it in the past. Cause it just didn't make any sense to me because there's a lot of things on here still, but don't make any sense to me. I don't even use that money. And that's at three percent increase. The council number that you see on there is with a three percent increase that you would have to unfreeze yours.
So what's the four percent across the board?
On this.
That's not, and then why is, why is some four and some three?
That's just because it takes so much out of um this, like it takes so much out of general, you take so much, are you telling me what you're talking about?
I mean, like if it's across the board, then wouldn't that include like?
I we, I can't ask for wages at four percent, I can only ask for three.
Okay, so four percent is everything besides payroll?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll schedule a an executive meeting to work on that.
Yeah.
Uh issue and then uh.
That's best for everybody.
Give us a week or something.
Yeah, they have Tuesday once a day.
Anything other than Tuesday everything?
What is it?
Yeah, I like on our s- our debt to pay the sewer back.
Right.
Is it beneficial to re-go through and refinance that? That would be beneficial to us or would it cost us more?
I can ask, I can ask. I can ask them.
Like just, especially if we're going to be doing more on water and we needed more funding to do something else. That was changed, it was beneficial to change it.
We gotta remember too, that last year, I don't remember when it was, you might be able to tell me. We did an incre- we had to do an increase for part of the grant.
Oh, um that was just for to be able to be solvent, like just as like a plain like business, it didn't have to do with the project. That's separate. But yes, I don't remember when exactly it was, but it was when I came here to talk about something else.
It was in August, September or maybe.
Was it a three percent?
I think.
An odd three percent for utility?
I I don't remember, I'd have to look, but no. I think, yeah, I I wanna say it was just water.
Just water.
Yeah. So I I just don't, I I came back and looked.
But yeah, there was a small one, I know for sure for water because it was a lot of confusion if it had to do with the project or not. Technically, it was just to be solvent, like it just had to do with the project because it didn't have to pay.
Right.
No, they're half done.
Our next meeting, um will be the eighth, so we need to do it before, well, the workshop is the third, but I'd like to do it before then so I can have everything ready for the meeting.
Our next meeting's when?
The workshop is October third and the um board meeting will be October eighth. So I'd like to do it before then. And I would like to suggest that we have trick or treat on November second, that's the Saturday after trick or treat, like we did last year.
Is that the way to?
So with the week of the twenty-third work for everybody, September twenty-third. And you said not Tuesday and what? Not Tuesday and Wednesday, so Monday or Thursday?
We can do whatever I think I'll just, you know.
Let's do September twenty-sixth. Six o'clock.
All right. Twenty-sixth at six.
Twenty-sixth at six. That's an executive meeting?
Yeah.
Fourth of it.
So under unfinished business, we've already really talked about the unfinished business, so we rescheduled that. So I don't know, Dwight wanted to update us on the park, we've got some pictures. The the buildings are already, some of them are already assembled.
I talked to Randy yesterday and he said they were trying to get a hold of them. He was gonna try to get a hold of them today, but they're really hard to get a hold of because they don't answer that cell phone like Harry.
Yeah, I mean, they started pouring concrete today on the south side of the lot. For the part of the wall.
Question you got?
Which it looks nice, I mean they're gonna do so much with the weather, hurricane coming this way, everybody's concerned we don't.
The good thing about that sidewalk, that I don't know if anybody knew or if even Randy had said it, that sidewalk is not the size of a standard sidewalk, four foot, it's a six foot sidewalk. And Randy and I posted in the gravel and we didn't touch each other. So it's it's pretty, I mean, six foot's pretty wide, so it's wheelchair accessible. It's it's gonna be impatient, it's gonna be nice.
Yeah, the the framing on the buildings are, is gonna be composite. And then the posts are gonna be six by six instead of four by four, and they made us a real good deal on that. So uh you'd be able to move tables in and out and have it for parties and things like that. And we're still discussing the idea of a one really nice fire pit. But it'll be one that would have to be maintained by people that use it, you know, because, and we can't supply wood and things like that. But we thought it would be nice to have one little area.
If you go over there, he's got where the two, what are those called, shelters?
Shelter.
Where they're gonna be and where the, he's got the fire pits marked, they're far enough away that that's a little bit of fire.
There'll be multiple fire pits?
He said yesterday that I could get one at each shelter. And they, I mean, it's.
So we'll have to keep in mind that there's still gonna be a curfew on that and we can't party all night. Those people live in that area and like Agnes, I don't wanna see fires going on that long.
She parties on the. Yeah, she does.
So is that a fire pit or like a grill?
Well, we've got some grills.
They're gonna have grills that up by the shelters and then a fire pit.
Bruce is gonna get some more metal grills made, like the grill we got, we're like two or three more of those. Somebody in college will make some.
If you go over there, you'll see where the cement is gonna be. And then probably, I'd say anywhere from ten to twelve feet back is where the fire pits are gonna be.
And we've got some really beautiful black iron benches that was, that Randy got online and uh
Found for a really cheap.
Some lighting that we're looking at for the four corners, that's really gonna be really attractive. That is gonna be a really a showplace.
Yeah, it's gonna be nice.
The brick is locked up right now.
What is the brick for?
Four corners.
The lamppost on the four corners. It's gonna be really pretty.
So when you say there'll be a curfew on it?
Yeah.
Is that something that'll be written in ordinance for us to be able to enforce?
Yes.
Pretty much eleven o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
Pretty much eleven o'clock.
It's nine o'clock.
The little park, I think closed at about eight or nine.
Isn't it, I mean, curfew is a curfew, right, going around town.
I think it's ten o'clock.
Ten or eleven.
Eight o'clock.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a curfew already set.
So like, but the thing is, so like, what that curfew defines is excessive noise partying.
So if they're just out there at a bonfire, you know, they're sitting there at a fire, are we allowing that or not allowing that? You know what I mean? If it's one of those things where, oh, they're having this fire in the park and they're sitting there. And they're just, they're just having a good time, not causing any problems.
With this one over here, we lock the gates at night, so if, you know, that one.
Somebody will come saying, we'll have to police that area.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is is.
We'll need something to be able to enforce.
I think the only place our net's gonna have gates that are gonna be lockable are the basketball, basketball courts.
And telling people that they have to leave is great, we can do that, but they're allowed to walk around town, but you can't stop people from walking around town.
You know, that ordinance doesn't stop that, that ordinance stops the excessive noise and partying. So it would just be something where we would need to, you guys would need to adopt some sort of ordinance saying at at this time, the park is closed. Or signage even, I think we'd cover, we'd have to ask Joe.
And the same with the parking situation, no overnight parking.
On the fire pits, and he's gonna make sure it's can't firewood only.
Yeah, yeah.
There there there'd be a lot of, with the fire pit, you can get in a lot of sticky, I'm not sure if that's a good.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
It's still negotiable.
It would be a distance thing, you know, I mean, depending on how far apart they are, I'm like, yeah.
But I mean, you got, you you got people that can throw stuff in it, that can explode, I mean, like.
Same thing with the grill.
I'm not sure if we want that responsibility of having a fire pit.
Those those grills are the same way, but they had that issue in. Those, those grills are the same way. They had that issue in Connersville there for a while where they were putting paint cans in the bottom of these grills and people were putting hot coals in there and then they pop, so.
I mean, it's one of those.
It's, you know, it's. I have to worry about the fire pits.
What's the, I'm, I'm asking, I'm just asking, what's the difference in having a fire pit and having a grill?
Well, fire pits down low, kids would be.
These are gonna be up high.
How high?
At least knee high.
Kids will still fall into themselves.
And they can still fall into a grill. I'm gonna be the devil's advocate right now.
But a grill is hard, hot charcoal, a fire is. Depending on the kid.
True.
It could be drunk.
I mean, either way, you're gonna have to have signage that's a blatant risk essentially. Oh, that's for sure.
You know what I mean? Uh, that takes the liability away. At least some of it.
It's gonna be a lot of signage.
Well, and each, each area is supposed to have a water hydrant.
Yes.
Yeah.
As well.
And then maybe something that you have to get with the fire department on whether that's, what, what fire could they have to follow on that? I don't know.
When they say fire, hydrant, that is one of those.
Right.
That you're supposed to, uh, guard. Guard hikers, yeah.
But then you can't really put, you have to link a lock on that because if you watch it, then.
Someone's gonna go and steal water.
The good thing is, the only.
Or just turn it on and let it run.
Yeah, the only good thing I've seen out of all of it is.
I'm not sure.
Security over there is pretty good.
Yeah.
So one corner and one the other one.
I'm sure if you, it goes like. Make sure that's a reason.
I guess probably things like that either way, like, oh, yeah, or you know, except for water loss and stuff like that. Other than when they do audits. You'll know exactly how much that was, so it doesn't count for water loss.
It's a big liability.
So, cause you might have extra meters already.
I mean, yeah, it'd be nice, but.
You help me talk to Joe about it?
I mean, I don't know if you knew what happened recently in Connersville, but there, there were badly vandalized.
That happens everywhere. Richmond, I have that every day. That's what's terrible, with the kids these days.
But a lot of those places don't have cameras.
Oh, there's not gonna be cameras over there. That's invasion of the privacy of the neighboring people.
Not really.
So you got, so you got a camera on that park right over there?
I do.
He does.
It's on my property, property though, so they can't really.
Well, it's not, it's.
You got, you got a camera, you got a camera outside this building right now on somebody's house?
Have you?
No, I'm near to you, looking, you can see a house.
Near to you, yeah. Well, I can see.
You can see the store.
My hands out, I can see, I can see the fire department and the tanks and, and the playground and then I can see Ronnie's.
So we just have everybody in town to go to the doorbells. They say that.
Face the park.
You choose, we, we're determined.
Four, maybe eight eyes on that park over there.
And across the pond.
Why couldn't we, our park being stopped, why couldn't we have cameras?
You can actually.
What we have down there, somebody cut the cords on them.
Yeah, there's ways around that.
I mean, we've been up signing to put on their surveillance.
Just put them on, yeah, put them on top of the light.
Which I think wouldn't be a bad idea. If you tell them that it's been under camera and they know, they can't complain.
If they don't, and if they know it's in a. There's a security or a camera system out there though. There's no wifi. So how do you monitor it? The wifi.
There's, there's a lot that would go into getting that.
You got wifi in this one right down here?
Where?
Where?
There, there.
There's like cameras.
The cord's cut.
Um, I guess where it was like, I saw like the. Little box up in the ceiling.
Yeah, there is, but the cords are all cut.
And there's a rubber snake in there too.
I know there's. But I don't, I don't, um, I don't know if anybody's tried it since we've switched providers, but I don't deceive it originally.
If it reaches here, it reaches out there.
Is there a way to have like the park board meeting like a different time besides um during the day, so?
Like ten, other than ten o'clock in the morning?
I can ask Randy, Randy said that.
We, yeah, it's kinda Randy's idea that. That's what they.
A later, I mean, yeah, because I mean, you're, you're asking all the working people.
At ten o'clock, I don't think I'm on my fourth hour day already. It's not five hours.
I'm with you.
No, I, I don't think we really have anything else on the agenda. So if I have a motion that we adjourn, I entertain the idea anyway. Anybody wanna make one?
Sure. I'll make one.
Motion. Second, all, all in favor, aye, aye. All opposed, motion carried. Meeting's over.